Good evening. Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, what?
Hold on, we need to, we haven't started the meeting yet.
I thought we were.
Yeah, no, okay. Sorry, our chair is late with a flat tire, so we'll start now. Could you call a roll, please?
Certainly. Mr. Ankuma.
Yes.
Ms. Carney. Mr. Lawrence.
Here.
Mr. Sharp.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter; personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff appointments, reappointments, resignations or retirement, childcare leave and EPED assignment and advisory committee appointments, and student matters under Section 2.2-3711A2, in particular, non-resident tuition student.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I'll look. Do we need a roll call? Okay.
Mr. Ankuma.
Aye.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Okay, could I get a motion to reconvene to an open meeting?
Hmm? Second.
Is there a second?
Would you like me to certify?
Mr. Kimball?
Would you like me to certify the closed meeting? Then we do that.
Do we need, do we need a roll call for open?
After.
Okay.
I'll certify and then we do it. All right, whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge: one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
Mr. Ankuma. Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shut the door. No, I think it's for the air. All right. Now we come to the public comment section. Do we have anybody here who'd like to speak? Do we have any speaker slips?
We would need to adopt the agenda.
Oh, I apologize. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, now we're into the public comment phase. Do we have anything?
We do not, sir.
Okay, anybody who's here who would like to speak? Please. Yeah, just come up here, you have three minutes, give your name, address, and time's yours.
My name is Blanca Plaza Snyder. I live, my exact address is 1003 A Lincoln Avenue, here in Falls Church City. I just say, good evening. One point that I would like the school board to consider is the use of the STAR for the identification of gifted and talented for A students, especially in the lower grade levels. This test, as it was created, was to be used as a diagnostic tool, and when used appropriately it serves the purpose of monitoring student progress for those who might be struggling in content areas of math or reading. So it's wonderful to be monitoring that and seeing how the kids are progressing. However, the use of the test in the current manner, because it's not being used appropriately, or it's not meant to be used in this manner, it invalidates the test. And so maybe something to consider would be returning to the way it was before with, especially like more kindergarten, first grade, where teachers see and identify maybe some kiddos, and then the enrichment coordinator thereby does her own assessment, or perhaps using another more appropriate tool. Thanks. Thank you.
All right, if there's no one else, we'll close the public session. Over to the superintendent for the facilities report.
Ms. Padilla, we will invite you forward for the facilities report. He's probably booking facilities.
All right, give me one second. I can find where I was. There we go. Good evening. So I'm just, I'm doing the 2015 Safety and Security Report that we do every year. I'm gonna be quick, I think all of you have a copy of what I sent to Marty, and she sent over. Just the highlights of the year, we're just continuing to work with, are transitioning from Fairfax County to the city's fire marshal, building inspectors, that kind of stuff. They're still learning our buildings at Mason and Mary Ellen. So every time they come over for a new inspection, they're finding a new room or something to look at, so we're getting closer to them being fully functional in our facilities. We did, we added the TJ modular classrooms this summer. Obviously, for the security side, there was cameras, access control, burglar alarms, fire alarms. It took a lot of coordination with the city to get that going, so I don't know if we could have made the deadline had they not kind of stepped up and helped us out in a lot of, lot of cases to speed up the process, since we had such a tight window there. What else we did? This year, we opened Jesse Thackeray Preschool, obviously. That, again, that took a lot of the city staff's time to get us, to get us in, rushing a lot of things, and as far as our fire alarms, sprinklers, generators, access control, cameras, these are all things that were put in by Facilities Department and not through the construction. So just getting all that in was a, was a lot this year. We continue to have major repairs at Mason for the fire alarm intercom. The building's just aging so bad, a lot of the wires are degrading, especially out to our trailers, we've had to redig and trench the new lines out. Still working on a, an open one right now, but everything's active and operational. And it's just, every day we're finding more and more, and it's, it's hard to predict what's gonna, what's gonna fail. So thankfully, Mr. Kimball has helped us with making sure we have enough funds to, to cover all of our expenses on that. Just completed the preventative maintenance for all of our access control system. We test every piece of equipment every single year, so our card readers, all the stuff in the ceilings that make it all work, the stuff in our IT closets that our IT team helps us with. We continue to replace non-functional cameras, that's something that's just a continued, thing we do almost weekly. There's always a camera going bad, needs adjustment, needs rebooting, whatever it may be. A big thing that we're working on, we've started working on, it'll, it'll finish in the fiscal year 16 budget year, is relocating our repeater. Mayor, man, our repeater is our, is basically our cell tower, so to speak, that runs our bus radios, emergency radios. It's previously, previously was housed on the city, on an old city water tower, no longer a city. So I have to go in through Fairfax County to get to the site and everything, so we actually moved it over to the roof of Mary Ellen. With new buildings being built, trees, you name it, it's just our coverage over the last few years has just gotten worse and worse, so we're gonna have to add another repeater. We're working on that with, with our contractor, and hopefully that'll go in this summer. We've added additional Securitas personnel at Mary Ellen, Mason, at Jesse Thackeray. Just really having them out there this, this year has kind of transformed how we secure our buildings. It's, it's, I don't know that we could, we couldn't have done what we're doing now with the, with the staff that we had previously, it was just, we just didn't have enough staff to do it. And just struggling to keep Mason's doors secure, there's so many doors, and there's just nonstop, people going in and out, they don't shut properly. So having the, the exterior patrol over there has virtually eliminated that, and I check. So there's always, there's always certain doors that were notoriously left open. We've also teamed up with the Falls Church Police, and they've helped us with, with kind of testing our security personnel, sending in people to help us, you know, find areas we could improve on. We've done this a couple of times, and we'll continue to do it, and they, they send us feedback, and they don't tell us when they're coming, I don't know, nobody, they just tell us after they've done it. And thankfully, we've improved since the first time we've done it. Financial information, it's, you know, we budget for all of our equipment and, and any special things, I just worked through Mr. Kimball and Dr. Jones to find funds for that. Just future business recommendations, just continuing to fund our camera, camera and access control upgrades at all the schools, it's just one of those things, it's just like a computer, they're always going down and having to replace them, so we keep money in the budget for that. Something I'm hoping we might be able to do this year is try to improve some of our sidewalks at TJ on the front, we did some last year, but front ones we just weren't able to get to for a lot of reasons, so working on getting some quotes for that now, and hopefully we can take care of some of that this, this summer or through the next school As far as Mount Daniel goes, you know, we're working closely with Grunley on the safety plans and how we're gonna get the kids around the construction and the staff around the construction, so I think that's sort of a, a fluid discussion that changes a little bit every week, how, what we're gonna do and how we're gonna, you know, make it work moving forward with that. The, let's see, we're going to be adding another Securitas person over at Mount Daniel this, this next upcoming school year to help with that, since there's gonna be sort of a split office scenario. So we'll have somebody that's gonna be outside roaming and making sure that the construction vehicles aren't, you know, roaming out through the parking lots when our kids are coming in and out the building, so we're hopefully, that'll, that'll help out over there. One of the things that the police have asked for is that they are provided a couple of school radios that'll work off of our communication system. These two systems don't work, their system and ours don't really link, they're, they use a, like a 900 megahertz, some type of system, and it's just, we can't really link into that due to what they do. So we're gonna buy them a few radios, have some in the dispatch center, and then a few of their supervisors, shift supervisors will have one in the patrol cars, so that they can, if they need to respond. And obviously, our SRO already has one. And then, I guess the biggest thing we're doing, as far as all this goes, the city and the Virginia Department of Emergency Management are planning a full-scale, kind of a, I don't know, active shooter-type scenario. You've seen these happen all over the region, but they want to host one here in Falls Church. So the city's leading that, they're working with our, with our staff and planning that. We've had a few meetings already, and they're, they're working towards others, and I think their plan is to have the full-scale one maybe this summer. I'm not sure if they're quite there yet, we're just waiting to hear back. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Sharp?
Yeah. A written report, is there going to be a report?
It will be on tomorrow. I will.
It'll be up? Okay. There's been quite a change in the metro since the silver lines come in. Have you noticed any things that, that had an impact on what you all were, were trying to do?
No, not, the same thing we've always had, we've always had metro riders that attempt to park in our lots or something like that, but Securitas, and they patrol our lots, we tow vehicles when necessary, or, and they're out there in the mornings when staff and students are arriving, so our parking's so limited, we generally would notice if there's a lot of extra cars showing up anyway, because the students will start complaining, teachers will start complaining, so, but I haven't really noticed any changes.
Including any, any reduction in that kind of problem?
No. I mean, it's just, we have, I haven't noticed any change at all with silver line openness, we've been so close to the orange line, which is, parking lots over there are already always full anyway, so we're, same old, same old.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay, thank you, Sevy.
Thank you.
All right, now for the consent agenda, I would ask unanimous consent that we approve the agenda as amended. Hearing no objections, consent agenda is approved. All right, Dr. Jones?
I'm sorry. Our, our agenda was different than the.
Okay, no, we just, we approved the amended consent agenda, so we're on to 7.01, Authorization to Hire.
Oh, thank you very much. Authorization to hire is an item that we have on here every year, about this time of the year, and it's so that if we need to hire somebody and not lose a candidate to another school division, you're giving me the authority to be able to hire. We do have some key positions coming up, and our, we're not meeting next week, as of where we were today, as you know, the last couple of weeks our schedule was off-track. And our next really official meeting right now is June 9th, which is pretty late, we are interviewing for a principal's job at MEH. We will have some other positions that are key, and it just gives me the authority to get people hired and get them signed, so we don't lose them before we have a school board meeting. And that's from now until when school starts in September. And I always bring them to you if I can, it's really just in between those meetings.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I move that the Falls Church City Public School Board authorize the superintendent to hire staff as deemed necessary from now until the beginning of, of school for the fiscal year 16, school year. The names of such individuals will be brought to the school board for approval at the next scheduled school board meeting.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No? Motion's passed? Please.
You mentioned the principal for MEH.
We are going through the full process. We actually issued a survey for input from teachers and parents, our middle school parents, and also to our fifth grade parents incoming on the traits and characteristics they'd like to see in the principal. We have an interview committee that is made up of staff, we also have senior staff, Tom Horn and Lisa Hyer on that, as well as support staff and parents, and they will be interviewing first round on Thursday. You're welcome.
Mr. Lawrence and school board, in order to keep, keep our minutes consistent with the way we've done things in previous meetings, could we go back to the consent agenda and get a motion and a, and a second?
Okay, the way we've been doing consent agenda was unanimous consent.
But we did, we always had a motion and a second.
Okay.
To that extent, Mr. Chairman, may I move that the board approve the consent, the amended consent agenda, as presented?
Second.
I have a question. This is what I was talking to Dr. Jones about when we were doing this the first time around. The approval of a student liaison to the school board is on the consent agenda, which is probably fine, but I don't see it anywhere else in the agenda, and I, I wanted him to be introduced to us and have a chance to say a few words, and Zach to have a chance to introduce him, and so I'm not sure where that fits into the agenda at this point, but I think it's important that that happen.
Oh, so that was the problem between the printed that we saw and this?
Yeah, yeah, and what's online now. So I don't know if we just need to add another item to Section 7, or if we want to pull this up and do it separately? Hi, how are you? Bad night?
Long day.
Yeah.
Welcome.
You could also do it in our superintendent's report, if you have to put it, since you've already approved him.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say we, we adopt the consent agenda and pull that out and make it a separate item later in the schedule.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's how it was in the printed.
Yeah.
Well, the problem we have, Zach, is the, the online one doesn't have Dorian as a separate agenda item, but the printed one did, so we were all going on the assumption that we were gonna talk about it later, but as we were sitting up here, we just realized that it was not. So we just need to stay consistent. So we'll pull it out of here, so that we can talk about it separately later on.
Yes. And we'll, we'll discuss it and then vote separately.
Okay.
Okay, great. You need 7.06.
All right, do we need a cleaner motion on that?
What?
Just as amended as good.
As amended, okay. We have that, we have a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No? All right. Turn it over to you.
So where, where are we?
We're at 7.02.
7.02. Okay, so next up is the amendment to the 2015, 2017 School Board Work Plan. Dr. Jones?
This was just a verbal commitment we made to the staff during the budgeting process, that we were not going to add that extra day to the calendar, and it's just making that official, so it amends the work plan, appropriately so, and we'll take that off our work plan, so that I don't get dinged at the end of the year for not adding a day. But also so that staff, we, you know, officially let staff know that the, the board did act on it in good faith and stuck to our word.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Jones on that?
No.
Seeing none?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Lawrence while he's not here, for his, for his diligence in carrying, carrying that request through, not only budget time, but I anticipate at this time, too. So thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Wait, he's coming back in.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move that the school board approve an amendment to the 2015, 2017 School Board Work Plan, not to add the additional workday for professional staff in fiscal year 16.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. Next, we have a resolution, Item 7.03, regarding commitment to maintain traffic calming efforts in and around the Mount Daniel Elementary School. Dr. Jones, Mr. Lawrence, you guys have been taking point on this, so jump right in.
We have been working very hard with the community in and around Mount Daniel to mitigate traffic over the last, really, year and a half, and they are very appreciative of the efforts that we've made, and it is working in that we're trying to make sure on our schedule, every time we have a big school event, we do close the street to local traffic only, and that means that they can still get in their driveways and get up and down the street. And since Sevy is here tonight, I'll say thank you very much, it's added an extra element to his team, because they are the ones that stand at the bottom of Oak Street, so, but again, they're very appreciative. The one thing they have asked for is that they understand that the school board can't take action for future school boards of something that would be binding, but they did ask, was there something we could do in good faith to say that when we're all long gone, that the community would at least have a piece of paper to bring back to the next school board and superintendent and say, remember you said you were going to continue to try to do this for us? So this is just a resolution to really make that long-term commitment, that we're gonna do the very best we can with the traffic issues, and to work with that community in and around Mount Daniel. Mr. Lawrence, did you need to add?
No, I mean, you really hit it, it's, you know, the only thing better than, the only thing worse than living next to a school is living next to a school, because you love having the school there, but you don't really like having the traffic all the time. And the neighbors have been great. They've put up with a lot of congestion at times, and Tony has really gone above and beyond in terms of school events. I'll never forget the one time, the first time you would bust everybody in for a school event, and I was walking my dog up the street, and I asked how the event had gone the night before, and the neighbors literally didn't know something had even happened, because the traffic just was not there. So it's, it's very much appreciated. So all this says is, we commit to continue being a good neighbor and working on traffic and congestion and traffic calming and shuttling for large events, and we hope that future school boards will do the same in the spirit of a good neighbor policy. We can't bind them, but, you know, I think knowing Falls Church, the fact that we do this will matter to future boards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Any questions, any comments? I think I'll just go ahead, it's not that long, and I thank Mr. Lawrence for, for drafting this, he leveraged his experience on the Hill to come up what I think is a very good statement, and for those watching online who may not have immediate access to, I think I'll just go ahead and read it quickly. It is a resolution to, a commitment to maintain traffic calming efforts in and around the Mount Daniel Elementary School, whereas the Falls Church School Board recognizes that the Mount Daniel Elementary School has been an integral part of the neighborhood for more than 60 years, and whereas, the Falls Church School Board recognizes that a school enriches a community but also brings with it a certain amount of traffic and other challenges that affect the residential neighbors, and whereas the Falls Church School Board has worked in good faith with the Fairfax County and city of Falls Church neighbors on the expression of the Mount Daniel School for several years, and whereas the Falls Church School Board wishes to maintain and enhance its productive and mutually beneficial relations with the community, and whereas the Falls Church School Board understands that it cannot bind the actions of future school boards, therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City School Board makes the good faith commitments below, in the hope and belief that future school boards will adhere to them in the spirit of positive community relations and an overall good neighbor policy, to continue long-term efforts to reduce parking and traffic congestion in and around Mount Daniel Elementary School, close the city portion of North Oak Street to local traffic only, and shuttling staff and community to the school for large school events, be mindful of scheduling activities during the day that could result in parking difficulties, and work to spread those events across grades and/or classrooms to reduce the number of cars at one time, and continue to support a strong community partnership with a neighborhood association, and waive the rental fee associated with quarterly meetings held outside of school hours in the common area of Mount Daniel Elementary School. So.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board approve Resolution 2-15, Commitment to Maintain Traffic Calming Efforts in and Around the Mount Daniel Elementary School as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, I'll just pass this down for signature. Thank you. So now we come to Item 7.04, Construction Update.
And construction update on all of our projects. We did have a construction update in morning announcements in the last couple of days that was, I think, very informative, had good feedback on that. At Thackeray, thank you to everybody who was able to attend the ribbon cutting, that was a fantastic event, and the property looks amazing, and again, because Sevy's sitting out there, Sevy and his team worked incredibly hard to get that property the way that it looked, just literally planting flowers and just all sorts of activities, so thank you to Sevy and his team. And we are almost ready to sign off on that building. We will, of course, as we always do, make sure every little thing is perfect, and we do not sign off until it is, but we're in a really good place right now. We are waiting on a front strip of grass, where our staff have gone and seeded, and they're checking it almost daily, and it is gonna take a little bit of time to grow, but that grass should be coming through shortly. At Mount Daniel, we are, of course, full steam ahead, getting ready for summer, and that will be, all the big work will come ahead, and the demo is what comes first there. I was at the McLean Citizens Association last Thursday, and that went very well. We had a member of Fairfax County was there from, well, from Fairfax County planning, and then also from the VDOT, and really did most of the talking in support of the project, that we had gone over and above to provide everything they'd ask for, enrollment projections for 25 years, where normally they wouldn't even get that, you know, what our busing looks like, and so they were able to really carry a lot of the load for Grunley and Arcadis that night, just because they said we were meeting every requirement, and there was no reason that their staff in Fairfax County would not recommend approval at the 2232. So that was a very, very positive meeting, it was a late meeting, but it was very positive. At TJ, as I had messaged the school board, we are putting off the TJ HVAC for about 10 months, and in all honesty, it's one of those things, when I thought about it the very first day, I was like, you've got to be kidding, because I'm such a schedule person, getting anything off schedule is not me, but it's actually turned out, I think, to be much better for the staff, when we really processed the timing of it. Our whole second grade will be vacating, that wing of the building, which is an older wing that needs new HVAC, so it's actually means this summer there's no packing in that building, and that's really was a welcome relief for their staff, so it, it turned out great. For GM and MEH, we are, again, the school board did recommend, you know, over a week ago, for us to move forward with our visioning, community visioning, and we are full steam ahead on that. We will have something in morning announcements, probably Thursday, we saw the advertisement that will go in, the news press with the invitation for the community visioning. It's going to be on June 6th, and again, you'll start seeing this everywhere from 9:00 to 12:00. So this is the first big event in this part of the community visioning, and we're also getting the stakeholder groups together to do all of those invitations, and there will be small stakeholder interviews that happen after the big community visioning. And again, this is working with Cooper Carey and them helping us guide through that process. And I think that's it.
Updates on, briefly mention lead for discussion at city council?
Oh, sure. Yeah, and I was in front of city council last night, where I was asked to come and talk about lead for Mount Daniel, and I have expressed to them that we are not at a point where it is recommended that we would even try to go forward with lead, due to the timing issues, it's very, very complex. However, we do have one or two members of council that really want to continue the discussion, and I am setting one council member up with some members of the construction team to have a phone conference tomorrow, so that they can hear it from the construction team, what are all the complexities of even trying to do it. And today, you know, as I was meeting with one of the people on the construction team, they used the word chaos, if that's what we would like to have, and I said, well, of course I don't want to have chaos. The biggest issue is, really for us, is the whole planning component. Whenever, if we were going to have lead silver, the school board had decided to do that, it would have been an RFP, first of all, we would have had, you know, Grunley would been an RFP, first of all. We would have had, you know, Grunley would have been prepared to present that. We didn't do that. It was a... It was an add alternate for us, and we let the city council know that all the way through November and December and said we really needed to make that decision by December. And if you remember, at that point of the budget, we were talking about a flat budget, and having another $100,000 for LEED was not a possibility. They had not... They took no action on it, and they still have taken no action on it. And we would have had our commissioning agent in at the ground, which you have to have when you get to your 35% plans. That commission agent is supposed to be checking everything, giving us review comments, supposed to be there at 65. They're supposed to be there at 95. We are half the way through this right now. Not only are we half the way through that component, but Grunley has already put out for all of their subcontractors and the bids for the people that would do the work. So, they would then also need to go back and do a change order for all of those subcontractors, and there would still be no guarantee that even if we tried to push it through, that we would get LEED certification. We could actually be wasting $100,000. So, it's very complex. There's lots of different issues, but again, I'll have the councilman speak with the construction team tomorrow, and hopefully, after they have that discussion, he'll understand how difficult this timing is. We don't have two weeks to waste, and, you know, I tried to remind council last night, our time to finish this building is October. That's after school starts. That's what the contract is signed for, October of 2016, and that's because we had a November referendum, so no one would sign a contract for us without, you know, having ample time. However, the construction company is doing everything imaginable because they know the expectation is we want to be in to start school, and we're on time right now, and we don't want to do anything to throw that off kilter. So, that's where we are right now.
Okay, and then while we're on the topic of... Well, first of all, any questions about the Mount Daniel LEED issue, Mr. Sharp?
Okay, not about LEED specifically, but the Mount Daniel process more generally. Is there a point currently where we are seeing the guaranteed maximum price delivered?
We are really there right now. I would say even tomorrow, and the one last piece that they were working on was the stormwater component, and everything that... Where we were last week was we're right at our guaranteed maximum price, which is 15 for construction. We're right on target. And I tell them that's the expectation, so we will be. I mean, I can say that tonight. We will be.
Well, it's just extraordinary work considering the circumstances all around the work with the community that, you know, we discussed previously, but also the sort of guinea pig situation that we're in with stormwater management up there and it being such a difficult topography in any case, whether you have new rules or old rules, and just extraordinary that we're making good progress. Thank you very, very much for all the work.
You're very welcome.
Well, Doc... Yeah, Ms. Carney.
Is there a date set for final approval by Fairfax County?
The 2232 is on June 18th, and after we go through the hearing, then the next thing will be we would get our permits. We're trying to find out from them, what is the LEED time or how long will it take from the 2232 to actually get a permit, and they have not been able to answer that yet, but they're really pressing to get that answer. Yeah.
And then with respect to Mount Daniel, you mentioned stormwater, but for the members of the community who are interested in that, could you just bring us up to date on the stormwater situation?
Right. Yeah, the very first time I updated you, that's when they were just getting in to figure out all the requirements on stormwater, and one of the first design thoughts that Grunley had, which would have been typical for stormwater, they were having to look at the water that would run away from the school and the piping that would go down Oak. Well, once Fairfax County let them know that not just going down Oak, they were going to have to go all the way over to West Metro, they had to go back and say, well, that's not going to work. That would be a tremendous, tremendous cost for Grunley especially, and so then they went back with another design, you know, working with the engineers, and they're actually doing a retention system, which I think I mentioned before, which is very similar to what they did at Thackeray. It's just much, much bigger, and it's on the back end of the kind of the parking lot playground area, and you can see it on the plans. And I almost brought them tonight, but the next meeting we have, I'll bring the big set and some pictures for you so everyone could see. So, the stormwater right now is probably the most difficult part is it, you know, messed up the blacktop, which we kind of anticipated that was going to happen, but we'll get the blacktop back. It just means you lose it, you know, during playtime while they're putting it in. But it's so far, I mean, everything's going well.
And there's no additional cost that would take the project above what we've committed to the community to spend?
No. No, and I, you know, and I'm also, I mean, really, really hopeful that this project will be just like all the other projects we've done, which have been very successful.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Just one last question. It does seem to me that the city is learning a lot about stormwater. Thackeray, I think the tennis courts, from what I've seen, are going... I mean, they'll be up very soon. I think they were slated for early May, and so is there any conversation going on between what we've learned and any information we could transmit to Grunley to help out with some of the lessons we've learned on stormwater? Or are they good?
They're... We've got an expert team that does this all over the place, and so I feel really good about them, and it was just really figuring out the new regulations because even Mount Daniel was under the old.
Okay.
Yeah, so, no, but they've done well. And Fairfax County, you know, and I have shared this with Mr. Shields, that the relationship with Fairfax County, I've always heard it's really a difficult, you know, to do construction, but I have to say, with Fairfax County, they have been outstanding, and they have been great to work with. They've been very much partners with us, answering questions at the table, so we've been very, very appreciative. And the same way with stormwater, helping everybody understand what are the requirements, what do you need to do. So, we're all... We're in a good partnership with them.
Well, that's good news. Excellent report. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Yeah, in the construction vein, one last point. I think we have scheduled during this next year for replacing the athletic field at GM, and recently came to my attention that there's a petition drive going on in Loudoun County to have them exclude the recycled tires as an infill product that can be used, and their petition references a previous adoption of such a ban by Montgomery County, Maryland. And so, I've sent the board tonight some information about both processes. The Montgomery County ban was apparently adopted in January. They're looking to do what they find is some plant material is the thing that they're mentioning as the substitute infill, and the Loudoun County petition references them, and it also mentions that there's been testimony before the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors with similar requests, but apparently not a petition drive at this point.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sharp. Just so I'm clear, item 70, are we now on our liaison?
You were going to add that, yeah.
Okay, so now we come to the 7.05, approval of student liaison to the school board.
I can introduce.
Zach, would you like to?
Of course. This is Dorian. We chose him for just a few different things. I don't think many of you have met him yet. You're going to talk after me, so be prepared. But mostly due to a few specific things that he showed us when we voted on him, and that's first and foremost, his experience and eloquence with public speaking. We saw a little bit of that, and it's, you know, I'm sure he's ready for the position, interest in policy and political systems. He's shown that, you know, in United Nations and other experiences in his experience in discussion and analysis of policy, maturity and responsibility, his interest in student participation in local government, something that he mentioned, as well as ideas in how to engage students further in civic affairs, which seemed like a great plus for this position. So, I'm really looking forward to see what he does, and Lawrence, yours.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Dorian Charpentier. I moved here at the start of ninth grade, and I have a brother who is also currently in ninth grade at GM. I took interest in this position actually last year because I, during my government class, I thought I wanted to participate in that as well. I wanted to debate, discuss, come up with ideas that would affect not only me but the people around me, and really the aspect of contributing or exposing other people's views and fighting for them is what appeals the most to me. I've followed some issues. Obviously, I'm not up to speed because I haven't been here this whole time, but I've followed issues concerning teacher salaries or the new school, for example, and I hope that Zach will help me engineer a smooth transition. And additionally, I'd like to meet with some of you in a more informal setting so we can get to know each other and so we can get some sort of atmosphere working. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to have you here. Thank you for stepping up to this. I'm sure that we'll be getting to know each other very well. Would anybody on the board like to have a few remarks?
Just want to say welcome and thank you for taking the challenge and join the club. We're all learning, so don't be shocked.
Thank you for inviting me.
Yeah, and I'd like to echo what Michael said. In terms of being up to speed, we're running as fast as you will be, so trust us. We know how you feel, and definitely all of us, I'm sure, are very willing to meet with you separately to talk, and when it comes to the budget, trust us, no question is a dumb question because if you've got the question, somebody else does. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Ms. Carney, Mr. Webb?
I just want to, again, welcome you. We're looking forward to working with you, and definitely, as Mr. Lawrence said, we definitely make ourselves available to talk with you about any issues and kind of get you as up to speed as we are with some of the issues that we have come before us, but we look forward to working with you in the near future.
Welcome. I look forward to learning about your interests and your strategies for representing the students and look forward to hearing about the students' interests as they develop in the coming year. Thank you.
And I think an initial good project would be maybe you can get a Twitter account going and explain the fun balance in a single tweet.
I'll get right on that.
So...
How about world peace or a cure for cancer?
In 140 characters. Exactly. So, all right, again, we're welcome. It's a pleasure to have you, and could I get a motion?
Not sure we have one, but...
Do we need to?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board accept the nomination of... The school board approve the appointment of Dorian Charpentier as the student liaison to the school board for the 2015-2016 school year.
Okay. Mr. Campbell, why don't you call the role for something like this, please?
Oh, certainly, with pleasure. Mr. Ankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Ms. Carney. Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Can we get a picture?
Oh, jeez.
Okay. So, you're jumping right in. That's good to see. All right, we come now to item 8.01, future agenda topics. This is where we sit down and come up with any additional things for the agenda down the road, so this is your chance to give us more business to consider. So, Ms. Carney.
Thank you. I have one. I mentioned this a little while back, but having just lived through yet another budget season in the city of Falls Church, I wanted to remind the board of it, and that is, as you all know, I've been proud every year as a member of this school board, at least for the last five or six years, to sign a code of ethics and behavior, which this school board, I think, does a beautiful job of adhering to in our work together. I suggested a little bit ago that we take a stronger leadership role in the community on that topic because I feel like civil discourse is degrading in our little city, and I'm not happy about that. So, I'd like to see the school board discuss whether or not we should encourage the city council to adopt a similar code, whether we should ask our boards and commissions as a part of being appointed to agree to sign such a code, whether our student government and student organizations should adopt such a code of civility, because, you know, we're a small town. We're not Richmond. We're not Washington, DC. We're mostly neighbors, largely acquaintances, friends and family, and I don't think there's any need for the tone of the conversation that takes place in the city in some places, so I'd like to see it stop, and I think the school board should be the leader in that. So, I'm hoping my colleagues will agree, and at a future time, we can take that topic up.
Thank you. It's an excellent suggestion, and I look forward to seeing it implemented. Any other thoughts, suggestions, proposals, queries?
Other than the 16 budget?
What about it?
I meant 17 budget. No.
Okay. Yes, I think we'll have a good eye to that. Mr... So, any other... If you... Any other... So, I think we will be talking about that, laying the groundwork, getting going sooner. Mr. Sharp, any... You look as if you've got...
Yeah, well, I think there are things that are likely in the pipeline. I just want to recall ones that were mentioned before, the advisory policy, the 5.12, and at a recent meeting, I mentioned that we might ask our folks who deal with athletic matters whether there are kinds of equipment or rule changes that we should be asking the VHSL to join us in adopting, or whether in some instances, we may do something a little different than what others may choose to do and still be allowed to engage in the competition. So, I'd like to, you know, just recall that those things were requested previously.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. I will channel the spirit of Margaret Ward, who is not here because she's at her son Brandon's lacrosse game. There was some talk about, should we meet on Tuesday? I mean, on Wednesday instead of Tuesday because of games and other activities. I don't know what the feeling of the board is. I mean, there's always going to... Whichever night we meet is usually going to be a bad night, so I think at a certain point, we should sit down and think about, do we want to go there? Is it better the devil we know than the devil we don't? And I honestly don't know, but I think it's worth having a conversation about. It does tend to conflict with a lot of things, but again, no evening is a good evening. Any other thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, the PTAs typically have used Wednesday as their meeting nights, but they're... Not all of them may be occupied by that, so we may find some space.
Maybe we should meet, you know, Thursday at 7:30 in the morning. That might be. But no, you're right. Everything...
Why are you doing that?
Everything cascades, and you're right, that there will be second and third order effects.
We've had good attendance, so I guess we reflect this year.
Yeah.
Haven't we, really?
Yeah, so... All right, moving on then to item nine, the superintendent's report. Dr. Jones?
Just a couple of things tonight. First of all, we're, you know, full steam ahead with SOL testing, which we are just overjoyed and absolutely love every year. You probably saw the article in Washington Post where the first couple of days of testing, Pearson went down twice nationally, and so we were very fortunate. The morning, the first morning it went down, our kids had not logged on yet, so we also waited just a few extra minutes to make sure everybody else in the country logged on again, and so if they got kicked off, we would be... We were... We were last on. So, we only had a few students who were affected the second day, who just literally had to wait for a very short while and then submit their assessments. Where there are school divisions, I know there's one school division where they have to retest 85% of the students. So, we were very, very fortunate and they were big assessments. We happened to be doing reading and math on both of those days, so hopefully Pearson will have a good track record to get us through the rest of this. But I let the board know more than anything because when kids go home and say, oh, my computer didn't work, or I couldn't log on, they tend to think it's an infrastructure issue and it was a Pearson issue. So, we were celebrating Agnes Meyer over the last two weeks. I say two or three weeks. I can't remember. Weren't we there last week? The week before. And we celebrated Mr. Byrd for the Leadership Award, which was a great evening at the Washington Post and so, so well deserved for Mr. Byrd. Tonight, we were actually at Washington Post before this meeting, celebrating Nan Hoff, and again, an outstanding educator. And the parent that was there, that had nominated her, as they were reading about Nan, she called it the kindergarten lottery, where you get to find out which class your child is in, and she won the lottery when she got Nan Hoff. And she was actually in tears, so, I mean, it was just a great, great event. So, congratulations to both of those great educators who set a super example. And it's interesting, I just have to share this, but from the community survey that we have for the middle school principal, there are several, I mean, a lot, who have said, what you really need in the middle school is just another Mr. Byrd. That's what... That's just personality-wise, that loves kids, and so I just share that. I thought that was kind of neat to read. We did find out today that the Virginia Excellence Awards, which are given by the Board of Education at the VDOE, that there were only two school divisions that were recognized. We're one of those two in Virginia for that award, so really excited to have that. I also want to share that Liz Germer was invited this year and asked... I say invited, she was asked to present at the Virginia Council for Administrators for Special Education, and that was because our special education results, as you know, are number one or number two in every county area in the state. And so, special educators are looking at Falls Church and wanting to know, what are the interventions? What are the things that we're doing to help kids be successful? And so, she's presenting VKs over the next three days, so that's exciting for us. And then on Thursday, just as a reminder, we are having our Celebration of Excellence, which are all of our nominees and our National Board certified teachers. And then, as of today, we were all there this morning to recognize a Virginia lottery teacher. And how many did they say? Eight hundred nominations? Eight hundred and fifty. And I think they choose, was it five or eight? Eight teachers, and it was Dr. Dipold. And so, it was just delightful to be there and, again, one of those educators that has not only had an impact in our school system, but in our community. The projects he does are real-life, really project-based. So, congratulations, and we're going to celebrate all those educators on Thursday. Starts early, around four-ish, I'd say, or 4:30, four. And then after that, there's another event that I just want to, you know, bring your attention to. Mr. Campbell is presenting at the American Legion on really local composite index, and then also, he'll talk about cost of competing. And there's some other people with him, including Delegate Simon. And as you know, it's really trying to educate our community about why it costs more in Falls Church, because we are one of nine localities in the state of Virginia who get very, very little state funding, and it makes a tremendous impact. And Hunter, I was saying to Ms. Carney, I think, yesterday in email, we've had a geeky few days, which we really like, running all kinds of numbers, and Hunter has just done a phenomenal job. So, I hope you can come Thursday and hear. I think you'll all learn because I think... I would say Hunter's probably even learned over these last couple of days because we keep running things in different ways, but he's doing a tremendous job with that, so I can't wait to hear him on Thursday.
At what time?
What time does it actually start? Is that seven?
Seven thirty.
Or seven thirty?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, thank you. All my... Everything runs together. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. And now, we come to the board and student liaison comments. Mr. Whitzel, would you like to kick things off?
I just really want to thank everyone, the board, Dr. Jones, Mr. Campbell, Ms. Kedall, and of course, Ms. Hyde, my seating partner. On this, a great year. It's been such an awesome experience. I've really been able to learn so much through our relationships and just through the, you know, every day, regardless if it was, you know, one of those ones that goes to 10:00 PM or a budget meeting, but it's, you know, despite that, it's... I'm just so thankful to have this learning opportunity and so appreciative of all of you. I've really got to see how, you know, people can have impact on the community and the passion and motivation of all of you just to keep working at these kind of tough issues on such a local scale. I'm really excited to see Dorian and thrilled to see, you know, what you do with the board and how you can, you know, work with students more and start new initiatives on your own. And I'm really confident in your ability and excited to see what you do. So, thank you all so much. It's been an incredible year.
Well, it's been a pleasure to have you, and before we let you off the hook, could you just tell us a little bit about your plans for next year for college?
Of course. I'm going to continue in helping to engage and develop in higher education. I'm going to a four-year startup university called Minerva. It started two years ago and I will be the first to graduate in class, and so that's going to be really exciting. And there's just a few different components. It's really ingrained in travel. I'll be spending my four years in seven different cities. They've tried to use Dr. Coslin, a Harvard Dean of Science, who's now our dean, his 30 years of research on how learning happens, to create engaging classes on our active learning platform, which is basically a nice Skype. And so, all the classes are discussion-based with no lecture, and so I'm really excited to kind of help create something new on the education scale and be able to be involved in, you know, the organization of my own, you know, learning, so.
And is there an international... Is there an international component to that, too?
Yeah. It isn't a public school, it isn't a U.S.-funded school. It's completely... They call it their admissions process a complete meritocracy, and so about 80% of students are international, only 20% are American.
And will you go anywhere internationally?
Oh, of course, yeah. The first year's in San Francisco, and then from then on, it's Buenos Aires, no, Berlin, Buenos Aires, Bangalore, Seoul, London, Istanbul.
It's so hard to be you. I can...
I'm really excited to be able to do that.
Well, I think I heard about that and I just had to ask you because it sounds really cool, and we hope that you will let us know how it goes and what's your discovery.
Of course, yeah. When I come back, you'll see me at one of these meetings.
Excellent. Excellent. Well, thank you. All right, so we'll start with Mr. Ankuma and do our comments.
Well, it seems like the common theme around my liaison assignments are all about leadership changes. At the... With the Gifted and Talented Program, we're losing Mr. Thackeray. He's been there for a while. With the PTSA, Gabby Sanders stepped down and Rick White and a few others have taken up the leadership mantle there. And even at this afternoon's four o'clock peak meeting with the superintendent in attendance, some transitions are going to take place. So, that's just been the general trend. I just want to point out to the lady who spoke about the STAR assessment, that that came up at our Gifted and Talented meeting yesterday, so it's not off our radar. I just want to assure you, it's under consideration, so we're looking at that, for what it's worth. Just coincidental that you mentioned it, but I thought I'd let you know about that. Obviously, you mentioned the PTSA, thank them for their support with the budget and getting that approved and all the fine energy they put behind it. Nothing new at the Chamber, I was at the board meeting last week, but otherwise, it's the transitions and things are winding down for the summer. Hopefully, we'll pick up later on in the year.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Sorry, just a couple of things. The opening at the Thackeray School was a wonderful event. I mean, the number of people from the Thackeray family who came into town, people who had gone to the old Easter Steels came because they wanted to see what had happened to their old building. I mean, it was wonderful. Lou Olum was there. It was just a great time and, you know, kids and parents and grandparents and, you know, the Smolinski's showed up, so that was fantastic. Just one comment about our action on GM last week. I really think that not accepting the unsolicited proposal was the right idea because it's going to help us do a more coherent and thought-out process than what could have been a rushed process. And the one thing I'd like to say, I think there's misconceptions in the public that we had the option of accepting it and just going forward with it without any competition or talking to anybody else. I've seen things written about that, and I just want to clarify, that was never even a possibility. It's not something we would have considered and it's not something we could have legally done. We would have had to have competition even if we had accepted it. I think the biggest word problem we had was, "accept" was the incorrect word. So, I do think we took the right step and I think we're well on our way to getting a new high school. And just a couple of words on Zach. You know, great enthusiasm from the start. I still remember sitting at Starbucks with you and Maeve and, you know, her having ideas and you having ideas and me coming away with a headache. I think your two biggest accomplishments this year are, well, three. You understand the budget more than you think, which is kind of amazing for anyone your age. Secondly, you really put in the work to get us more students on our advisory committees. I'm sort of pressed to think if we have any right now that does not have a student representative, which is fantastic. And I'm glad to see that the city followed, you know, our example, and we've got students now pretty much everywhere telling adults what they think, and adults are listening, which is, I think, the other good part. Secondly, you put in a great process for getting Dorian and people in the future, where it's very organized, you've got a good vetting process, not only for, you know, the student liaison to the board, but also the student liaison to the committees, where there's an application process, there's a review process, you meet with administrators and teachers. And getting things organized matters. Having somebody who comes in and does a great job, but doesn't leave something behind for others to be able to continue, it's a mixed blessing. What you did was you did a great job and you left a process in place that we can follow, we can change a little, and we can build on. So, you know, you left a legacy and we thank you for it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. We'll go down all the way to Mr. Sharp and work our way back in.
Okay, I want to thank Dr. Jones and Chief Gavin for initiating an application for an award regarding the bus camera program. And while we don't know who's won the award, there is a luncheon tomorrow at which Nancy Hendrickson, the director for our transportation program, and myself, apparent Stephanie Oppenheimer will be attending, and perhaps one or two others who may be available. Thanks for accommodating several seats there, but we look forward, in any case, to enjoying seeing the different programs that are going to be showcased there and hoping to come back, at least with a better understanding of how well we've done and to give appropriate recognition to all the people who contributed to a much safer situation for our students getting on and off the buses. The reason I'm wearing a red shirt tonight is that a recent member of the Lions Club and a very, very novice in that organization, they're celebrating tonight at the Italian Cafe on Lee Highway, their 75th anniversary, and they are acknowledging the efforts of many generations of people, including those who started the Child Development Center many years ago, those who started the Chamber of Commerce in 1950, and who continue the work and service in the community to this day, including the Bushow family, who are going to be recognized for some of their services appropriately. They'll be the grand marshals, that is Barry and Kathy Bushow will be grand marshal for the Memorial Day celebration coming up this coming Monday. I want to certainly encourage those who might be interested in school board or city council to step forward and do so quickly because time is short before the petitions need to be submitted on June 9th. That would qualify candidates for running for either the council or the board. And also want to point out, at least in the budget that we recently adopted, there was some additional money for stipend for board members that would begin to be available with the new terms in January. So, at least perhaps enough money to cover childcare expenses in the evening for meetings. Also, I just mentioned again the materials that I would ask go to the Materials for Board Review that had to do with the turf field issue. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Mr. Webb?
Thank you. Continuing in the vein of Ms. Ankuma, with my liaison with the elementary school board, PTA, the transition of leadership has begun there as well. I went to their end-of-school-year ice cream social on Sunday to kind of meet some of their new leadership and also kind of congratulate Trish on doing a great job with running that organization for the last couple of years. The daycare advisory committee's meeting was postponed until tomorrow, and I'll be able to update that for the next meeting. And then also, I want to thank Dr. Jones, as she mentioned in the school board report on last Friday, of working numerous times and lots of emails and phone calls. As of right now, the tentative date for the first lady, Ms. McAuliffe, to come visit, Mary Ellen Henderson, is on June 10th at 11, between 11:00 and 11:30. She has a great interest in healthy meals for students, and she presented an award to the school system, I believe now almost a year and a half, last year, last summer, and said that she would like to come in and see what we do in person, and that was the date that worked, so she will tentative right now, is planning to be here on the 10th of June over at Mary Ellen Henderson. So, we're looking forward to hosting her here on... Here at our schools for that day. That's it for me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Ms. Carney?
Thank you very much. As all of you know, I am the city's appointed member of the College Board of Northern Virginia Community College, and so I would definitely like to give you a little bit of an update about what's going on over there. The big thing that's gone on over there was last Sunday, we had graduation, and so I was pleased and honored to go to that graduation. A couple of things I would share with you about it, there were about 7,500 graduates. They had to have two ceremonies at the Patriot Center because there were so many graduates. And those graduates, 100 different languages are spoken in their homes. There was a point during the ceremonies when they asked people to give a whoop if they were the first person in their family to go to college, and it was just huge noise. So many kids there, the first kids to go to college in their family. So, it was just a really terrific, terrific time. And I hadn't been to a community college graduation ceremony before. I was just very, very impressed. The speaker was our governor, Terry McAuliffe, and I had a chance to speak with him and share with him how I enjoyed meeting his wife last summer, when she provided us with the award, and how excited we are to have her come visit us. He asked his assistant to come over and said, is it scheduled or do I need to ask him to schedule? And I said, no. It's all good. But I did have a chance to share with him all the initiatives that we've undertaken as a board to ensure that our kids have access to food, to technology, to books, and to all the support that they need here so that no child in our jurisdiction is not ready to learn. And he congratulated me on those efforts, and I congratulate each of you on those efforts as well because they're very, very, very unusual. So, that was really... That was really special. The second thing is Jesse Thackeray. Oh, my gosh, what a great little place. I mean, what a stunning little place. I wish Sabby was still here so I could thank him personally. You'll have to convey that to me, but the building and grounds are just absolutely beautiful. I had a chance to meet the staff who were there, and they love, love, love the building. They're so thrilled to be there. They're... I mean, they just smile and their faces shine, and it is just absolutely... I can't imagine a better environment for our young kids to go and to learn. And so, that was great. It was great to see the Thackeries. It was great to see Lou Olum. I hadn't seen him for a while, so, you know, all the smart people were there. But I also wanted to take a minute to recognize John Lawrence. No one recognized him specifically that evening, but John was really the school board member who took that little project on his back and worked with Tony very closely to make sure it happened. He invested dozens and dozens and dozens and dozens of hours with dozens and dozens of community members to make that building a reality. And so, I just... I want to thank you for that. You, you know, since you've been on the board, you have really been our leader in terms of variety facilities matters. You do a great job, and so I really appreciate it. Thank you. And those are my comments for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Carney. Well, I was putting off a homework assignment and Marty was playing pruent officer, but I finally had the pleasure... Zach, I signed your diploma as well as everybody else's. Unfortunately... with respect to processes, and I think, you know, there's a habit that we develop, and I think we institutionalize and personalize at the same time, a lot of habits that generate excellent results year in and year out. Lot of playoff activity going on. Tennis team had some successes last night, soccer teams are doing well, I think baseball is still in the hunt, so a lot of evening events going on. I'd also like to thank the many parents who work to staff concessions, they do a great job. And, you know, it's amazing how much participation there is that's visible this time of year. Memorial Day Parade is coming up next week, another great thing. I would, I would call out the vice mayor, I saw him at Civil War Day the other day, which is, you know, another form of institutionalized education that we have here. It's not formal, but I think it's a great reminder of, you know, of our history. I think the, the last thing I would say is, I would echo Ms. Carney's remarks about Mr. Lawrence's hard work on Mount Daniel and Jesse Thackeray, and really do appreciate all that he's doing these days. Dr. Jones, you two, day in and day out, are doing well, and I will have to criticize your characterization of the award that came out today is stunningly inadequate. I think this will come out tomorrow in morning announcements, but, you know, there were two divisions in a hundred and nine schools that earned the Board of Education Excellence Award. So, you know, two divisions, and that was the City of Falls Church. I think in that one, a specific school that was named was George Mason. And then two divisions in a hundred and thirty-seven schools earned the Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award. Again, Falls Church was one of them, and Mary Ellen Henderson was named as the school. So, you know, I think we're punching above our weight these days, so well done to everybody. Thank you. Now we come to the approval of minutes, of which we have none. So, and so we end with a whimper and not a bang. So again, Mr. Sharp and Kay, welcome. Mr. Whitzel, thank you, and we finished at a relatively decent hour tonight, so thank you.
We were early tonight.